Good morning. We will have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll call to order. We have Sean Secora here, myself, Tom Loom, and we want to welcome Jeff Arnett, our new county commissioner. Number three, we will have election of the president for the calendar year 2021. Do we have any nominations?
The nomination's on Secora.
I second that. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We're all too peremptively.
Welcome? Okay, his phone number is... 291 HELP.
Thanks, Arnett. This seat's warm.
This seat's down. I thought this was Ed's seat. Well, thank you, guys. I'll talk more later in my closing comments, but thank you. The next item on the agenda is the rules and procedure for the management of regular meetings of the Montague County Commission.
You might just clarify what we do each year, just so...
Do I have a motion?
So moved to accept.
Second?
Seconded.
Okay. Any discussion? These are generally our rules, procedure for the year. There were slight changes that we added this year. Mainly, we added some language to discuss meetings virtually in light of the current pandemic, and we tweaked a few things to just make it read better. So anyhow, that's something we approve every year at this time. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye. We're all unanimous. The ayes have it, and it passes unanimously. The next item is the regular consent agenda with our county administrator. Good morning, Renetta.
Good morning.
You look different from over here.
We have 12 exoneration for $6,931.49. Vouchers, General County Fund, $541,745.09. Full severance, $9,007,2156. General School Fund, $256,8153. 911, $254. Chestnut Ridge Park, $25976. Camp Monthly, $5,222.4. Mason Dixon Park, $1,070521. Assessors' valuation, $2,016369. Purchasing card vouchers, General County Fund, $2,999.95. Camp Monthly, $90.52. Mason Dixon Park, $19994. For a voucher total of $821,17329. Position vacancies for boards and authorities. We are going to change this. Instead of reading off all of the vacant positions next week, we're just going to say that they are on our website, and we're going to include the link on the agenda.
Great.
Okay? But we have the Mon County Planning Commission, Mon County Development Authority, Camp Monthly Advisory Board, Abandoned Dilapidated Enforcement Agency, Mason Dixon Park Advisory Board, Regions Explaining Development Council, Historic Landmarks Commission, and the Mountain Air Trail Network Authority. We also have fiduciary orders for December 30th... I'm sorry. For January 6th, 2021. And then, that's it. Then we have a couple other items, fiduciary items.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. The ayes are... Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. The separate fiduciary orders?
Okay. We have an itemized statement of services for Fiduciary Commissioner George Armistead.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. You have a motion and a second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
We also have an objection and request to be heard by Lou Scottchell regarding the Arthur P. Scottchell estate.
Okay. What is the commission's...
Well, I would like to move that that be referred to a fiduciary agent.
Well, just before, from a legal standpoint, that is a decision that the commission had made to accept the fiduciary commissioner's recommendation, so this would appear to be an appeal of that decision, correct? And I think that's a matter that should be taken up with the court.
Correct. We voted last week.
To approve the...
To approve the fiduciary commission.
The fiduciary report. So now you have an objection, so the only option would be that we just acknowledge that there is an objection, but he would have to go to court for that?
I don't know that we have a mechanism to hear appeals on our...
No, we don't.
On our own.
That's correct.
Orders. I think those appeals have to go to the circuit courts.
Correct.
Yeah. So the objection letter is noted.
Yeah.
So is there a motion?
Do you have any action?
Yeah, no action. Just I think...
Well, I think that we can at least just respond that the issue would need to be taken up with the court.
Okay. Move that...
We have our lawyer write that letter.
Okay.
Move that we have our attorney explain the options.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Sorry, I'm usually used to doing this off my computer screen, so... Okay. The next item on the agenda is the introduction of new employees or personnel changes. Do we have any? Okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is comments from the public. We will open up the meeting for comments of the public. Any member of the public wishing to be heard must raise their hand, come forward, and provide his or her name and address for the record. Please note that time will be limited to three minutes unless circumstance warrant. Additional time as approved by the president. Do we have anybody who would like to speak? Mr. Scottchell?
Yes, my name's Louis Allen Scottchell, Sr. I am representing right now myself in the Arthur P. Scottchell estate, and the objection that I have is because that I feel that the county commission, this has been almost a 12-year battle, that this has not properly been introduced, and the orders of the courts already followed. Going back to an appeal on it to the circuit court is only going to bring another ruling that the judge is going to say that this is a county commission issue. And by those grounds, all you have to do is read the first court orders from the very beginning of this estate to see that they were not properly followed by the fiduciary commissioners or the appointment of Keith J. Pappas as the CTA. On September 17th, 2010, there was a stay put on the memorandum of agreements, which even give Keith J. Pappas the permission to become the administrator, also the will contest that was filed in October of 2009, that the fiduciary failed to appoint a curator, as it should have been by the statutes of your laws and your probate laws, until this case was taken either to court or evaluated as the court order already suggested that Mr. Pappas failed to respond to. And in February of 2012, he was made a defendant, substituted from CTA in the memorandum agreement to the defendant in the 2006 will contest, which, March of 2014, the 2006 will was found to be invalid, bringing back, full circle, that the 2005 will was the proper will of record, which made me, again, the executor. It also notes in your... The fiduciary commissioner that you ruled to approve, if you read all his factual background, it misrepresents the ongoing troubles and orders that the courts had already put into place. Plus, you've got to remember, I was the first executor. I filed my disbursement. It's not even recognized that I was even a part of this estate until after March of 2014, which all statutes of limitation should have been waived because I had no say. The only thing they used me for was the administrative costs and bills and the bank loans, which I hold two deeds of trust on, which has never been satisfied by this estate, but yet the attorney's paid himself thousands of dollars, and it's still wanting more money from this estate. This procedure for the Mon County needs to be investigated and examined, that we need a new way of introducing so that the DC's wishes are properly carried out to the proper beneficiaries. The fiduciary commissioners are not working. They do not follow, and all the evidence I gave them on the October 1st, 2020 hearing was completely ignored. And I have evidence to concurbrate everything I'm telling you today, that everything you are approving is false. They don't even have the name spelled right. Arthur C. Scottchell. That's my son, in that order. So I think we need to sit down, and you need to look at it. You've got to remember, March 26th, 2009, when Art died, I was in charge of all his businesses. Now that they've said that the computer has been completely scrubbed, which that's, again, in their hands, Mr. Pappas and Mr. John Scottchell, they have reconstructed my uncle's estate, and half of the stuff that's in his fourth and final accounting don't even belong here. You're approving something that's so out of whack that it's going to stop... This procedure's got to stop, because I've listened to your December 30th, how it was approved. Renetta addressed it. Everybody unanimously approved it. You don't even know what's in it. This needs to stop. I'm out over $200,000, and I have my accountants just on the last deed of trust.
Mr. Scottchell, I've allowed you way past your time limit, so could you please wrap up?
I am asking you to set aside your approval and look into this further before it has to go to the circuit court again, just to come back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Sir? Take your time.
I knew Art Scottchell. I considered him a friend. Rob bought about...
Can you tell it for the public record? Could you tell everybody your name?
Yes, I'm sorry. My name is Larry Starcher. Currently, at this moment, I am the administrative director on the matter of the estate of Arthur Scottchell. And I want to tell you, if you all had any idea of what you signed and what you agreed to, I'm not sure... You might have been thinking, thought it over a little more. I bet you don't know that you just paid Pappas another $132,000, probably plus interest. Doesn't tell you. I could have settled this thing if he would just take, give up his right to $132,000 back a long time ago. And I did my damnedest to do it, but it didn't work out very well. I bet you didn't know that you were dealing with something where the administrator, CTA prior to being, Mr. Pappas, he was taken off, you all took him off, basically, and was... Let me get my breath. He... When he... He was also the defendant designated as such by Judge Russ Kauschus. And when that jury came in in March of... Last year, wherever the hero was, it basically said that the will that Pappas was screwing around with was... It was null and void, no legal effect whatsoever. So what do you do when you see that the thing that you were sitting on had to know? He had to know that there was a jury verdict out there, and what did he do? You know what he did? And so what you said was okay. What he did is he went out and took the $85,000 that had been held in a separate fund, which the commission, back in February of some year, told him that he should not take that or bother that, because they kind of needed that, because they had trouble back about that time with it. I'm sure at least one of you knows what I'm talking about. And so there, what he does when he is found to be the... Screwing around with the wrong will, just that simple. He... He... I'm trying to get what I'm going to say. I don't want to catch myself in a lie, because these people like to sue. I wasn't thinking about lying. I was trying to think about where I wanted to go to, what I wanted to say, because I could sit down and get beat on or that. He now, when that verdict came down and was not appealed, he then put himself in a different position. That was the ex. He should not have taken a thing, a drop of that. We have a case that some old lady who thought she owned a house, really thought she was being honest, she sold it. And she sold it to somebody, and it turned out she didn't own it. And so she got into a battle, and they even made her pay back the money, the value of the house that they got, the court did, the big court. But so you all said, well, that's okay. You just go out and use that money, or whatever it was. What he really did, he's paid off some of his law buddies, to be honest. And in that count, it just makes me turn my stomach. We ought to get a system like Marion County has. Look into it. That would be one judge. You don't have these guys putting together, ah, here's an estate that there's nobody involved. There's a lot of houses to sell. We can make a lot of money, easy money. And Ryan, whom I've had in class at the law school, is just full up to here on that order I saw. Makes me sick, and there isn't anything else I can do. But it's still going to fall on your shoulders. And I'll tell anybody who wants to talk about it how you are helping screw the public, in this case, beneficiaries. If Arthur Scottchell's desires could have been expressed through this man right here, oh, Art wanted... He had a 5% interest, that's all. He hadn't had much interest in it. But he was doing it for his children, because that's what Art wanted. And he was... He's a small businessman. He would have made a go, but no, we have somebody jump in there and sell on it to make profit. And I tossed that $132,000. That's what it's all about.
Judges, could you wrap it up?
Yes. Yes, I certainly will.
Thank you, though. I appreciate you coming and speaking to us and taking these matters seriously.
I apologize for being honest. Such good health, but I ain't drunk, because I've never tasted live life.
Thank you, Renetta.
Thanks, Judge.
Do you have anybody else? Mr. Goldberg?
Good morning. David Goldberg, 1200 J.D. Anderson Drive here in Morgantown. One, Happy New Year. To our newest member of the county commission, welcome. Commissioner Secora, congratulations on your appointment. You know I come every couple months randomly, just to come in and say hello, but also give an update of how we're doing at the hospital and how we're doing at the health system. Last time I was here, and thank you for convening us a few months ago, or feels like a few months ago, it was last year, but a few weeks ago, related to vaccinations and getting some education and bringing a broader group together. But I'm here to just talk about and kind of set the record straight a little bit about what is the hospital situation here, at least from a Mon Health Medical Center perspective. Today, I'm sitting with 28 patients out of 164 beds with COVID. What does that mean? We have capacity. We still see, give or take, 28,000 to 30,000 ER visits a year. People are seen immediately. We have our Wedgwood practices that have walk-in clinics here and also in Fairmont with Dr. Baumphelium Flower. They do antigen and rapid tests there, and then if they need to be hospitalized or transferred, we have continuity of care. We have great collaboration and communication with Ruby and WVU Medicine. We're on... Albert, myself, and many others are on statewide calls every week with then General Hoyer, now the new general, Secretary Crouch, and many members of the Hospital Association to make sure we understand what's going on around the state. And I'm here to say, while the pandemic is upon us, if people mask... Congratulations to everyone here being masked, even though mine's a little funny, the point is well taken. If you mask and socially distance and wash our hands and let's follow the CDC guidelines, we can bend the curve. We're starting to see a surge post-Christmas, a little bit post-New Years. That being said, I'm here to say, I got vaccinated. I get my second shot today. I don't have any twitches. I don't have a third head. I don't have third arms. I'm not chipped. I'm here to say, trust the science, and let's do what we can do to be able to bend the curve and get back to some normalcy as we get control of this pandemic. The hospital continues to do well. We did have a significant hit, like all healthcare institutions and small businesses, related to the pandemic. We reduced elective surgeries. We saw volumes drop in the spring. We, like the economy, rebounded very quickly, where we saw significant improvements back. It still cost us over $20 million in lost revenue and expense, but we didn't stop by not giving raises to our staff. We did. We didn't touch matches in 401K or 403Bs. We didn't furlough or lay anybody off. We flexed to volumes. People used their paid time off to be able to subsidize themselves when we didn't have volume, to be able to have revenue coming in, to be able to pay them or need them, because at one point, we only had 40, 50, 60 patients total in our facility. Now that is not the case. Today, we're sitting at 70% capacity. We have reduced elective surgeries. However, very acute, very sick people are seen timely. I couldn't be more pleased with healthcare in North Central West Virginia. We all should be pleased about that. Everyone's doing what they can do. Great collaboration. My good friend Jimmy Smith is here, Mecca 911, our Mon EMS system, the partnership with WVU Medicine, has single-handedly continued to improve EMS responsiveness here. Jimmy sits on our board. We communicate regularly. Couldn't be more pleased. Last year, we opened up a long-term acute care hospital in Mon Health Medical Center for people needing longer hospitalization who did not have that level of care in this part of the state. Now, 25 beds are pretty much full. It's a taxable hospital, which means it contributes into the tax coffers, but it also provides a level of care we didn't have before. We also opened up an incubator studio this year to partner with doctors to create medical devices to be able to, one, create jobs, two, bring economic fulfillment, but to improve the patient outcome. And I'm thrilled about that. It opened up about three weeks ago in 3,000 square feet at our medical park. So a lot of great things are happening. I just want to implore on anyone listening, wear the damn mask, wash your hands, get the vaccine, talk to your doctors, but if you're sick, talk to your doctor. We use telemedicine if you can't come in or don't want to come in, but don't put off your care and get sicker. Be responsive and own it, and your medical professionals across the country and across our county are here to take care of you. So I appreciate that. Anything we can continue to do to be a good partner to the county, all you have to do is call me. It's posted everywhere. My card, my number's on my business card. You all have it. Let me know what I can do. But more importantly, thank you for your leadership and your steadiness during these uncertain times. I don't want to ask to suspend the rules. If there's any questions the commission has for me, I'm glad to answer them. If not, you all know how to reach me.
Thank you, David.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else from the public that would like to speak? Okay. Our public session's now closed. Next, we have Colleen Coon with Grants.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a request for reimbursement. It's for the VOCA grant, and it is in the amount of $7,726.77.
Is that on? Do I have a motion?
Move for approval. Seconded to accept.
All those in favor, say aye. Okay. Next is correspondence. Do you have any correspondence, Renetta?
Yeah, I had a couple of things come in after the agenda was posted. Received a letter from Meals on Wheels, just thanking the commission for the support in outlining their major contributions. I believe we provide $10,000 in funding. It's a letter, in case you guys want to read it. We also have the annual report for Valley Healthcare System. This covers July 1st of 19 through June 30th of 2020, and that will be on file here in the commission office. That's all I have.
Don, do you have any correspondence? Okay. I do have one piece of correspondence that I wanted to read. It was from Dr. Smith, and again, I want to read it to kind of put a flavor on the efforts that the Health Department is doing with this whole vaccine rollout. Apparently, some individuals had tried to get in touch with the Health Department, and they called Charleston, and Charleston told them to call the county commissioners. So Dr. Smith sent us a message that, sorry, county commissioners, we're tagged as a solution. We were told by covert leadership at noon, 12:30, that Montague County was getting 100 doses, 10 vials of Moderna, to be administered to those over 80 years of age at the National Guard Armory. We were not prepared for the slot and scrambled to get a phone line devoted to scheduling appointments. Five people came in to handle the phones, and it was like selling tickets to a rock concert, as we had 100 slots scheduled by 12:45. Things should go orderly tomorrow, and we are resting on how to have scheduling accomplished daily as things ramp up. We are doing nasal swabbing twice weekly, Monday and Friday a.m. We are doing daily disease investigation and contact tracing for those who require isolation and quarantine. Our numbers have once again gone straight up, and we are struggling a bit as the National Guard are pulling back, and we have lost some of our CDC NIOSH crew that have been with us since the past five months. We are vaccinating Monday and Friday afternoon, and all days, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursdays. Soon, we will be in the NOROP location in addition to the Health Department. Each of these functions takes a team of 11 to 12, which is one team to swab, one team to process results, and contact, two teams to vaccinate. We've hired additional people, but we do not have a call center, employees, or equipment to currently pull it off in a seamless way. I guess it's a backhanded compliment that folks have an expectation that we can perform at this level. We're not yet in the driver's seat, as we have no say over the number of doses that we get and the time that we get them. All decisions are made in Charleston. We can get the scheduling piece figured out, which has... If we can get the scheduling piece figured out, which has thrown us... Was thrown at us just four days over a holiday weekend, we're performing much more smoothly. Also, we were still in Phase 1A and B of our leadership, and our leadership has opened vaccinations to general public, starting with 80 and over. We're working to build these solutions, but once again, we are building the plane as we are flying. We are aiming for perfection, but impossible will take a bit longer. Thanks for your patience, Lee. So I just think that's important, if people just understand that your Health Department... We were lucky to have the Health Department we have. It's the best Health Department in the state, and they're working, but this vaccination whole thing's going to take a little while to get all figured out. So anyhow, that's the rest of the correspondence. We have unfinished business.
Yes, sir.
No unfinished business? Do we have new business?
Yes. Consideration to approve the 2021 holiday schedule.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval. Seconded.
Okay. Any discussion? I would like to note that we, two years ago, we put language in our holiday approval, that if the government adds any holidays, those are automatically granted, so that we don't have to have special meetings whenever he has a holiday. So just wanted to make sure I mentioned it. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Reports from officials or department supervisors. Carrie? Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning.
Mitch, you were up late watching the news last night. Met you up late watching the news last night, just out of curiosity's sake.
Well, I was just up watching it, thank goodness it wasn't our county. But I just wanted to bring, on behalf of myself and the employees in the county clerk's office, welcome our newest commissioner to the county commission. And to also speak a little bit about the vaccine, I did submit a list of our employees who are interested in getting the vaccine to the Health Department, and we are very, very much interested in getting that as soon as possible. Of course, you know, we're seeing the public daily, and it's my understanding from the West Virginia Association of Counties, that all county employees have been designated in the essential worker category. So I'm just putting a plug in for any more effort that the county commission can have in trying to make sure that we get that sooner rather than later. So, thank you and welcome.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you.
I believe Jimmy isn't still here, is he?
No.
But, yeah, I believe the government employees are considered, they're considered part of a critical government infrastructure, so that's all part of the phase plan.
Level one, phase one, four, I think they're.
One D.
One D.
One D.
Okay. Anyone else? Is our assessor, Mark Music? Morning, Mark.
Morning. Morning, gentlemen.
Just, I want to take this opportunity to come down, and from our office to Commissioner Arnett, welcome.
Thanks, Mark.
Glad to have you. And as for some of the information that we submitted out, Renetta, that I gave the letter to, we had to do some revising on that letter for Mr. Adrian. It will be completed, we were waiting on who was going to be the new president, so we can address it to that person. Anything else for our BREs, we'll be getting out that information as we're finalizing that, so that's basically all. And welcome.
Thanks, Mark.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else in department heads and needs? Okay. Next, we have reports from county commissioners. Tom?
Yeah, just a short one. Yesterday, I was fortunate, I was able to meet with the prosecutor attorney and the chief judge to discuss several issues that have really developed because of teen court and COVID and not being able to meet and follow through with the teen court rules. So we had a really good meeting, we have a board meeting next Monday night to discuss what we talked about, and I will give you a follow-up after the board meeting, along those lines. The other is just that I wrote that this is, will be a challenging but quite an exciting year. My hope is that we will have the citizens will accept and be vaccinated, and hope we start to move back to some form of normalcy, as Dr. Goldberg said. Basically, I will throw out my one personal wish is to rebuild the working relationship between Charleston and the governor, and I hope we can move forward on that as quickly as possible. And as I said, I'm quite excited to close out the year 2020, thank God, and to start fresh in the year 2021, and I wish our new county commissioner the best, and I will make sure when people call me, I'll also give his phone number out, too.
Okay, Jeff, do you have anything?
Yeah, just a quick shout-out and thank you to the town of Granville for lending the Health Department their moving billboard sign that's on a trailer to help folks find their way to the armory for the vaccinations. They've been, they've loaned it to them a couple of times and have expressed a willingness to continue to do so, and it's been expressed to us, that it's been a big help, and we would like to just thank them for doing that. And thanks, everyone, for the warm welcomes. I look forward to moving this forward, and I echo Commissioner Bloom's sentiments that thank God 2020's done, and hopefully, it's a little brighter on the other side here.
Thank you, Jeff, and welcome.
Thank you.
I do want to thank my fellow commissioners for appointing me president, though they'll both, well, Tom will tell you that it's something that I dread. I don't, but we, as a commission, and when we appoint a president every year, we always point out that it doesn't make any of us one more powerful than the other, it just gives me more responsibility to preside over the meetings and a lot more signatures that I have to provide for Carrie. But other than that, you know, we're three equal commissioners, we like to work together, and we'd like to make decisions as a group, so, you know, welcome, welcome to that, to that group.
Thank you.
Just, I always report what, anything we've been working on since the last meeting. It's still been a light schedule because of the holidays, but I did have a community strike force meeting yesterday. That was that smaller group that's talking about the possibilities of the use of the Mylan plant. So we're still in fact-finding mode, but hopefully, we're working towards some possible solutions that are going to benefit those employees that are affected. This morning, we had our call with Green County, which, it was just first call, where we discuss how we can work together across county, across state lines. Today's a regular day, and then this evening, I have my Mason Dixon Historical Park Advisory Committee meeting. Tomorrow, I have a MAP Executive Committee meeting, and Friday, we have staff reports, and in the afternoon, I have broadband initiative. Again, I wanted to thank everybody, or thank my fellow commissioners. I did want to, you know, Jeff, you were kind of thrown into, you're drinking from a fire hose. Over the weekend, we were discussing a couple of different things, and I had to explain to Jeff that this is the way we operate, we're totally transparent, and when we see something and we have a concern, even if it's a concern with another commissioner, we raise those concerns and we move on, and we get it off our chest. So I was a little worried that you're like, oh, jeez, these guys hate each other, but we really do, we do really do respect each other. We do, we do argue at times, though this isn't the place for it, we work those things out. We work those things out between the meetings. From a, from a perspective, I don't give advice, because I've had this old saying that the wise don't need it and fools don't heed it. So I want to share life experiences, because you are, now we have two commissioners that are actually, have full-time jobs doing other things, and the advice that I would give you is to compartmentalize your time. You know, you're going to have a lot of demands on your time, and as the years grow, I'm starting my fifth year, the time that it takes grows. This past year, in my regular job, I have to track every minute of my time, so I'm at it, I track my time. And I tracked, I just did that for this past year, and, you know, it was about 1,100 hours that I worked on one thing or another. This part of the actual job is about 53% of my time, engagement in this building. But meetings we have on our boards and authorities, meetings we have representing the commission official functions, special projects, all that stuff, it all adds up. So it was advice that Carrie Blaney gave me. She said, you're a commissioner, you let us know, you tell us where you're at, and we work together to schedule around it, because it can work. I mean, it does work, I think it works. I'm still successful at my regular job, and I would hope to think that I'm successful here. But it does require a significant amount of compartmentalization. So help us, don't let us push you. Don't let us push you into, you know, wanting to be a part of everything. Again, that was, I remember that advice Carrie gave me before I ever took the office, it said, you know, everybody's going to want you to do this, everybody's going to want you on their board, take it slow, and make sure you choose what you want to work on. And as we get into this, you'll see that, and I look forward to working with you on a lot of those things. So I really do, you know, look forward to this year. I think we've got a lot of big things that we're still, we accomplished a heck of a lot last year, and we accomplished a heck of a lot the year before, and we want to just keep moving, so I'm looking forward to this year. So, do we have anything else?
Thank you.
No. Move to adjourn.
Seconded.
Okay, we are adjourned.